Leave us nine o'clock, so we'll bring this meeting of the special meeting of the Commissioners Court to Titus County to order. It's on the 25th September at nine o'clock, and we'll start with invocation. Jimmy, would you like to lead us some prayer?
Good day, Hymen, Father, Lord. I just come to you, thank you, Lord, for all you do for us. Lord, I thank you for the rain that came through last night, Lord, and ask you, Lord, just to those of us that didn't get it, we ask that you just send some rain our way. And, Lord, we just ask you just to be with us as we go into our court meeting this morning. Ask you just to give us the words and wisdom to do what's right and for all of Titus County. Lord, just be with our first responders and our service people and watch over and take care of them, bring them home safely to us, Lord. Lord, I ask you now just to go with us as we go into this meeting and give each and every one of us the wisdom that we need to do what needs to be done. These things I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Leslie, is this the only form you have for open comments? Okay. Number one, on the public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042, the Texas Open Meetings Act. And we have Mr. Steve Bolster, I believe, is the only one here.
This is in regard to the fire.
Yes, sir.
With this, would you be the time to say?
Yes, sir.
You can just take that microphone there, Steve. It's hard to hold it up there if you don't mind holding it. I know that's...
It's back, you hold it.
Rock star. We'll try, we'll try to do it. Good morning. My name is Steve Bolster. My address is 1497 CR 3240 in Mount Pleasant. Phone number is 903-305-5408. You folks have a difficult decision to make. I understand that. I want to be clear that I have respect for the people that are first responders. To have a calling, to be a firefighter or EMT running into harms way, there are people that are, have the DNA for it, and there are people that don't have the DNA for it. I don't have the DNA for it. I'm not an expert on fire safety, I'm not an expert on how to put out a fire. So with that said, I believe that they should be supported, firefighters, volunteers, and professionals. They should have the right equipment, they have the right training, and they should have the support from the community. With that said, the city and county are servants to the taxpayers. This is not a discussion regarding the professionalism of our paid and volunteer fire department. Every taxpayer in the city and the county, I would hope, would want this to be a safe community that does its best to save lives, properties, and businesses. I've been following this issue since December of 2022. I got dragged in here, sitting in the back, it was a packed house, and I watched that we had a very big controversy that was brewing on this. After 10 months, I finally got to review the current agreement that we have for the, I believe it occurs from the city proposal, and it doesn't seem like much has changed on the proposal from what I knew back in December on the initial proposal. So there's an increase to 1.3 million with what appears to me to be less services to the county, and also in saying how the money is spent, how the county money is spent. Although there's three-minute return protocols, it does also say in here that grass and vehicle fires are the responsibility of volunteers in the county, or, and I don't have any other word, at the whim of the city to respond. That's a little crass, I don't mean to say that, but it's at their discretion whether to respond. Someone brought up on social media that this is problematic during business hours because people work, the volunteers work, so it's a question of whether we'll be supported with grass fires or vehicles. That's problematic because there's approximately 812 farms in Titus County. Grass is our business. You burn grass, you're burning our structure, you're burning our livelihood. The vehicles that we use in the field are not cheap, they're not old, they're extremely expensive. When I'm rolling hay, I'm spending quarter of a million dollars in capital as I'm rolling through there. That's a big chunk of my livelihood. The other glaring problem is that 50% of all capital expenditures are the responsibility of the county, with no say, and they are the property of the city. That's a tough one for me, because I think that that's a problem because now you can never have any kind of control over what's going on with the county. In Titus County, this is not the only service where the city has been, I'll say, upsetting the apple cart. We've got a water issue that we're facing because we had, it's, I believe it's gotten down to a 24.5% increase in our water costs. And they're also negotiating with Chinese foreign nationals with 900 apartments that are supposed to be built between 271 and I-30 with a $30 million bond attached. How that got that far, I don't know, but it does need to be watched by us here in the county as to how that evolves. They also touted that they lowered the tax rate. They did, but the other side of it is that we've had 100% increase in our property values. We're going to pay higher taxes this year. The city is probably going to rake in between 40 and 60% of extra revenue. Additionally, at a minimum, in this proposal, there's a 7.5% increase every year if you can't come to an agreement with a mutual agreement on the increase. Well, 7.5 compounding, we see it doubles in 10 years. There are very few stockbrokers who actually can guarantee a 7.5% annual return, averaging for 10 years. To me, that's a little rich, and I think it's a bad agreement because there's a lot of loose ends on this agreement. The city and county should have a cooperative relationship. That should be absolutely paramount. We want people in the city to benefit as much as people in the county, and it should be a community that thrives together. The county proposal that I did read actually puts more support to the city and county. I've been told the county has committed that if they go through with that, they will support both the county and the city regardless if the city is not reciprocal. The city costs should decrease, so the burden to the city should lower. People inside the county will be assured that a professional and volunteer fire department of firefighters show up at every fire regardless of whether it's grass, vehicle, or structure, 7 by 24. For me, that's huge. I don't want to have a question, is somebody going to show up? I don't want that. Finally, the cost for fire service that is proposed appears to be the same, and it looks like we would be supported regardless of the type of fire. The cost to start this up, I believe you're taking advantage of some grants that maybe you can speak of a little bit more that help mitigate the capital expenditure of a startup of a county fire department. It looks also that there might be lower costs in the future. If it stays the same, we'll still be at a benefit. So in summary, I do support the county's proposal, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bolster.
No other speakers. Okay. We'll move on to number two then, considering possibly approve the minutes from the September 11th, 2023 regular meeting of the Commissioners Court.
Make that motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number three, consider and approve reimbursement to brewery cash for utility relocation related to the FM 1735 project as recommended by Lockner.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve those fees.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Applewhite. Number four, on agenda was Ms. Holly Parker, was concerning a mandate of vaccines and mash for private sector in Titus County. She is unable to make it today, so there's not going to be any, wouldn't be anything on that, so we'll just table that and let her come back at another time. Number five, considering possibly approve terminating the existing interlocal agreement for the fire protection services between the state of Texas, County of Titus, and City of Mount Pleasant pursuant to Section 7 without cause by providing written notice of termination at least 12 months prior to the start of the next physical year. Any comments on that?
I do. I agree with Mr. Bolster on this. Correct me if I'm not getting your name right, but I think the county and the city should work together, and I know there's been an ongoing deal with one another. But I did talk to one of the councilmen the other day, and they said that they think that we could get a 30-day extension on this deal before we go with the one year out to give both entities a chance to look over these contracts again and hopefully come up with a revised contract that both of us could be in agreeance with. I think we should give them a chance to do that, and, you know, hopefully we can come up with something we can work out and work together on this, so.
That current contract we got, Jeff, is, are there things in there that you want to keep? There's things that are in favor?
Well, I want to take some stuff out of the current contract, because I don't agree with the contract, like the seven-and-a-half percent increase, and like he said, the response to car fires and grass fires in the county, how to like that, and I'm sure there's a few other things that we could come up with, but, and have a set pay across the board that doesn't go up, you know, for at least a 10 years, whether it's 1.2, whatever it is. I mean, whatever we come up with and agreeance on, so that's the way I feel about it, so.
So in other words, you don't like the contract?
I don't like the contract. I think we should keep it for 30 days, and, you know, before we take the one year out, and hopefully we can hash this thing out within 30 days, because I know they're willing to work with us. How do you feel about that, Ed? Do you think that could be done?
Yes, we should be able to. My purpose to be here today is to listen and maybe answer questions. There's things in the contract we understand y'all don't like, and some we don't like. The 7.5% increase, I guess we put in there... Okay?
Just make it a little closer.
Okay.
We can hear you, just people on the video will be able to hear.
The 7.5% increase was put in there in case we couldn't get a, come to an agreement. We, since I've been here, we've always come to an agreement. I think I called Judge Lee and said, how about 100,000 increase? He said, how about 50? So we took 50. I mean, it wasn't hard to come to an agreement. These fires' costs go up every year. I think the gentleman mentioned that maybe these costs could come down. I don't think they'll ever come down, they'll just keep going up. But my purpose of being here was just to say, to let you all know that the part in the contract that says that you got to let us know, it's a year from now, to let us know, it goes from September 30, so if you let us know in October, it'd be September 30 of '25. We want to tell you that we want to waive that. You don't have to rush to any decision. If you want to take 30 or 60 days more to study it and talk, then that's fine, and if, whenever you decide to do it, it'd be a year from then. So that's, that's my purpose today in answering questions, but we're willing to talk to you if you want to.
I think you need to understand whether we cancel this contract or not, we're still, that's not shutting the door on the city of Mount Pleasant, that's just going through our contract and going by our obligations of giving the year out, and then it gets into how it is written on the paper, and it is written on there, if it's not by the 25th, that it would be another year. And I know that you're saying that, but you've also got to have your council vote and several different things to get that all approved, so. But go ahead, anybody else go ahead and comment.
We had this, come up with a contract situation, but it just keeps, it just, we had to do a written report, we never got into any answers, and it just prolonged, it's prolonged too long. And I talked to Chief McRae Saturday, and I appreciate him calling me, but it's just, you know, we've got to have, you know, more protection because we got a car fire or grass fire, you know, like he said, it could burn up his whole...
Livelihood.
Livelihood. And we've got to start somewhere, you know, like you said, if we can negotiate after this here if we have to, that's fine, but we just can't keep dragging it on. It's just drug on too long.
Jim?
Yeah. First off, I want to say that there was a tractor fire out close to the interstate in my precinct last week. Mount Pleasant showed up with a command vehicle, an engine, and three brush trucks, and six men. There's no way we can get that with the county fire department. They've always gone above and beyond what they have, what the contract is called for, and I've got a deal here that I want to read, that I, I've been studying about this all week, and this is just some stuff that I have come up with. I need to say something before we jump into what I feel is a huge mistake. First, I want everyone to know that as an elected official, I feel an obligation to the citizens of Titus County to do my part to provide them the best fire protection and emergency services possible. I am very concerned about the safety and well-being when it comes to structure or grass fires, motor vehicle accidents, tractor and other farm-related incidents, children or senior citizens that have wandered away, drowning where divers are needed, and many other things I have been involved in, involved with for 50-plus years. The city has always provided adequate personnel and apparatus for an emergency situation, as I have already mentioned. I doubt that very many citizens of Titus County know or know any of this or even care unless they have an emergency situation where they had to use any of these services mentioned above. We have to be careful that when, when and if we start a county fire department, that we are able to provide the same level of service that we are getting now. I don't want our county citizens to go one day without the best we can provide. I am not against a county fire department sometime in the future, but now is not the time. The city and county must work together for the good of all concerned. After all, we have to live together. We shop the same stores, go to the same restaurants, schools, and churches, and so forth. We must work together.
You do understand, I'm not saying that they don't provide that, but you do understand in the contract that it says that they do not have to. You understand that?
I understand that.
So, but you're good with that being in the contract that they don't have to?
I think it's something that we can negotiate. And that's one reason that I think we need to ask them for a 30-day extension, and...
Once again, like I said, in that contract, what part of that contract are you liking?
The only thing that I've really got a problem with is the cost of it, and I think we can work on that.
So you're saying the 7.5%? What part? I'm just trying to figure out what part of the contract...
It needs to come out. I think the 7.5 needs to come out, and I think we just need to sit down, us and the council, not one or two of us, every one of us need to sit down and talk this over, and I think it can be done in 30 days. We'll do it.
I think, I feel like this has been a very unfair contract for Titus County ever since
it's been implemented. I think that this, today was to cancel the contract that we have now, and I think it ought to be canceled, and then we can work on a new contract if we, if we come up with a contract, because it's, the whole contract is very unpayable for the county for a lot of reasons.
Well, what, my question, Joe, is why can't we wait 30 days before we cancel it?
We're going to cancel this contract no matter what, because the way they're going now, you get a new contract, is what you do. You don't use the same contract.
This contract would be in the void either way.
I understand that, but why can't we wait 30 days to do it? And sit down and talk to them and see?
Why should we wait 30, because by law, we told them we'd do it, that deal, and it don't make no difference, whatever we negotiate is going to be a new contract, it's not going to be the old contract they're going on now.
I don't agree with you, I'm sorry, but I don't agree with that.
You agree that it's going to be the same contract?
No.
Okay, well, that's what he's, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, I mean, this contract, this contract will be in, just like it is right now, for 30 days.
But why, for 30 days? This is, this is what...
So we can talk to them?
This is what we've been going through and going through and going through. This is what happened the last year right before the end of the year. They didn't, you didn't have a contract, and we had to sign this contract because we're finna be without a contract. So if we cancel the contract, we've got a couple of months that they, they certainly can bring us a proposal, we can sit down with them. This is not voting on if we're moving away from it.
I don't think we're the ones that's questioning it. I think we're the ones that need to stand and make a proposal and take to them.
We have.
We have.
Well, that...
Okay. Okay.
That's my opinion. I mean, this contract is not good at all for the county. Why would we want to renew a contract or even extend it another 30 days when we can go ahead and propose of getting out of this a year? They got a year anyway, because it's a year out. But go ahead and cancel this contract, and if they want to work something out, we can start a new contract.
Then?
That's my opinion.
I disagree with that, but that's...
I mean, I, I'm...
Everybody's got their own opinion, so.
I want to work something out, but I don't want it to be in the contract that, you know, the things that they, they got in there that we don't agree with. I want to come to an agreement on stuff.
That's why we all need to sit down and talk. We can't, you know...
That's true, but even if we cancel this contract, this contract is just a contract that we're, we're not comfortable with, it's not, it's not really doing Titus County, it's one-sided deal. And if we cancel this one, we can, we can start up a new contract for the next year. This contract don't end until, until next year, it's a one-year out.
Ends in October. I see, I see what you're saying, but I still think it's, it's...
But how long is it going to take before we get this all resolved? I mean, we've got 30 days right now that we think we can get this done, how long is it going to take us to put a fire department together?
Well, how long is it going to take the city council to get it back with us?
Well, I understand that. I just, I'd just rather get it done, get it done fast, and put it out.
I think that's the fastest way to do it.
I think it needs to be done immediately, and, in fact, starting this week. If the council can, can, if we can get together and get a proposal and get to them, then I think it needs to be started this week, and by the end of October, we know what we're going to do, and...
We're going to know either way by the end of October.
That's what I'm saying, but this...
We're still going to have to have a new contract regardless.
Regardless, and this is just getting out of the old contract.
I understand that, but that's just...
That's giving them their 12-month notice, and if we negotiate it, we can have the contract, and that's fine.
Hey, we want to negotiate all the time.
That's 30, 60 days, there's no problem.
I don't want to...
But I just don't want to stay with the contract that we have at this time. That's my opinion.
And that's my opinion also.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion.
Because we got to work, if we're going to work on the contract, we need to start from day one and go. And act this contract we've got here is over, we start here, we've got, you know, I want to get on the ball with it.
This contract goes through October of next year. This is not us getting out tomorrow, this is 12 months.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but also, if, I had something on my mind I was fixing to say, and I don't forget what it was now.
The whole, the whole thing that I'm trying to say to you, Jimmy, if you don't like the 7.5%, that's in that contract. If you don't like the one year out, that's in that contract. We're going to have to have a new contract regardless, whether we negotiate it in 30 days or 60 days. That, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying.
And I want you to understand fully that I'm not against negotiating for a new contract, but I, I don't feel good with this contract. You say you don't feel good with this contract, so...
Well, one thing, and I just, it just come back to me what I was fixing to say. One thing that I see is if, if we cancel this one, well, then the city council says, well, we're not, not in any big hurry to negotiate now, we've still got another year.
That's up to the city council, that ain't up to us, so.
But if we, if we say we need to do it in October, by the end of October, then we've got 30 days that we've got, all got to work together to get it done, so.
But if you don't agree, you're stuck with that contract, right?
Do what?
But if you don't agree, you're stuck with that contract.
No, not until October.
They hadn't voted on that contract. It come today saying that, they hadn't voted on that in council, that it's okay to get out of that 25. So then you get the lawyers, and the lawyers say, well, there was this and that. I just think it's bad to stand a contract that you don't agree with, so.
I'm sorry. Hate to get in the middle of your, there, I think what Commissioner Parker was trying to say is, and saying, that I see clear that if, we're both going to need the year, once we've got, given notice, we're going to need the year to, to make changes so that we can do this, so we won't have a lot of time. Once we try to negotiate, and if it doesn't work out in 60, 30, 60 or so, then we won't have the year to make the plans. So we're going to have to kick in gear as soon as we get the notice, and I think that if, if we extended it 30 or 60 days, and, and then we could negotiate, then we were given notice, and we give you the year. You have a question, Monica? That's all we're saying, is that you extend it 30 or 60 days, and you got a year, when you give us the notice, we'll get, both get after it. I know when we get the notice...
This, this is the same thing that we went through in December with Commissioner Parchman and Commissioner Applewhite, and we give another, almost $300,000 to the city for the one year out. Is that correct?
I just want to make sure you knew, we're going to need the year, we're going to need the year.
So if we get out of this, are y'all, is the city going to negotiate with us any?
What now?
If, we sign this here, say we're not going to go with this contract, will the city go and negotiate anyway?
Of course, of course, of course. I'll make a motion to give a one-year notice for canceling fire contract with the city of Mount Pleasant.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I vote aye. So we'll give them their 12-month notice, and if they'd like to negotiate, Ed, we'd be more than happy to negotiate with you. But it'll have to be quickly, because if we move forward, once we put it in drive, we won't be putting it in reverse.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Number six, considering possibly approve the first contract renewal with a PACC inquiry vendor for the, provides the state automated victim notice services for the year beginning September the 1st, 2023. Barbara?
Judge, this is a grant that the county's had for many, many years. It's a notification system for victims of crime. We are just simply required for the commissioners to approve our continued participation. It's about $6,500 annually. There's not any major change to it, it's just that you need, I need your permission for us to continue.
Get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve that contract.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number seven, considering possibly approve participating in the regional public defender for capital cases insurance with an annual cost of $7,382. Barbara, is it correct that we put like $7,000 into an account as well? We got $14,000 or something like that?
We put $12,000 a year.
$12,000.
And we got $108,000 in that account.
Okay.
But that would, that's not nearly sufficient for a public cost of capital.
Right, for a cost, right. Is there, we've only got that $12,000 something budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible, I know it's not on the agenda that way, to give the $7,000 for that capital defendants insurance policy, and then move the rest of that over into that fund that we normally keep?
Yes, sir, it's at the place of the court. We can have a budget amendment to do that.
You guys understand what she's talking about there. We've been just putting $14,000 in there, and with this, $12,000, I'm sorry, and with this, that would give $7,000, and I believe that's with Texas Tech University, or is that right?
Um... Um, you know, I don't remember exactly.
What that does is we have a capital murder, because a capital murder case is going to run us a little over a million something dollars easily.
It's the Regional Public Defender for Capital Cases. There's the official name of it. That office is in Hainaut.
It's out in Lubbock. And I think they work with, uh, Texas State Law School and stuff to send lawyers here if there is a capital murder or something to that effect.
John Mark has reviewed this. He's also sent it to David Colley.
I think everybody's on the same page with it. I just want to make sure that we go ahead and, and since we've got that money budgeted, move that over to the, uh, to that fund.
Yes, sir. I'll have that at the next meeting.
You can get witnesses out of, out of the country. You got to fly in. It's, uh, capital murder can be a very big expense to the county. Should we get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the public defender's capital case insurance.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number eight, considering possibly approve a two-year extension of computer services agreement with Brian Information Technology, formerly Kimbro, at a rate of $162,936 for one year and for $168,180 for a two-year in keeping with the exemptions allowed under chapter 262 of the Local Government Code. Barbara, you want to speak on that?
Um, this is our information technology. It's Seth Bryan is the person that y'all accustomed to contacting. He con, he works with every department within the county to, to maintain the computer services that we have. This is a contract that the county has had for, I believe, decades. It is, um, commissioners, in November of 2020, commissioners approved a discretionary sole source exemption for K-Bro. The name of this business is changing. It's changing to, um, Bryan Information Technology LLC. It's simply an incorporation of their current business. That's the only thing that changes.
Is this?
Go, go ahead.
They have given us a, a specific set rate for two years and the contract includes an automatic extension unless we give notice similar to the, to the one with the city. But it's based on the Consumer Price Index, which is an independent source and not, not a fixed amount.
Is this service bid, has it been bid out or is this something that the person y'all used?
It was something that was bid out, I believe, when it started. And since that time, we've declared them as sole source. Commissioners voted on that in November of 20. The reason behind that is because in order for someone to bid on it, K-Bro would have to open up how the county does business with regard to cybersecurity and those kinds of things.
Okay.
So that was the reason why we decided it was in the best interest of the county not to open that.
And they do a good service for us, no problems? They take care of it?
Yes, sir. They're, they're responsive even on the weekends. Monica's had to work with them, I think, some on the weekends.
Does Tac bid that out as well?
I couldn't hear you.
Does Tac bid this out as well? They know what the commu, what the counties do.
Um, I don't, I'm, I'm not aware of anything that Tac has.
And, and the rate is, is 6,000 more for two years?
No, the first year is 162,936 and year two is 168,180. It's a fixed increase for those two. And after that, it's the Consumer Price Index.
Consider a motion.
Make a motion, we approve this.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve this with K-Bro or now Bryan Information Technology.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number nine, approve oral and written reports of the county officials.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve those.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 10, considering possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 11, approve the budget amendments.
Um, Judge Cooper and commissioners, you have an email that I sent to you early last week. It's our final year in budget amendment, so the list is long. Um, for the first items, it's all things that are in and out within a particular department with the exception of a few items. Those items actually total, uh, let me find my page, $101,163. The main reason for that is because of the use of utilities, water and electricity over the course of this summer that has been so very hot. So you have those things in, in email. I'm, I'll be happy to go over those. Um, it's a cell phone increase for the county judge's office of $170. That's simply due to the change between Monica and James Webster when he was there. Um, publications, $1,500. That's the newspaper publications for the items we have to put in there related to the tax rate and the budget and all those things. Those costs are going up and up. There's some talk at the state level that they may remove that from the newspaper and put it on websites. I don't think that will ever really fly because there are so many of us who prefer to get it in a hard car. But in any case, though, that does increase. The insurance for the volunteer fire department equipment went up $200. And then within the former ARPA funds, this is the one that there, there's no, there's changes to individual line items, but the net impact is zero. There's no money here that's part of that $101,000. County court, we had to increase translating costs. Um, you're aware of how our demographics are in the county and so we have to have translations more. For district court, we had to increase the other litigation cost, $7,345. That is due to, um, specialty kinds of things, psychological evaluations, bringing in expert witnesses, those kinds of things. Uh, we had increases to FICA and Medicare for JP I and JP II, $32 for the county attorney's office. That's for auto repair expense, but it is a line item we had not used in the past. The same thing with the district attorney. There's $97 there for meals. The treasurer had an increase of dental insurance. That's due to the, when Sharon Reynolds was moved over to the treasurer. And then Mrs. Applewhite had requested a de, a decrease to other expense and an increase to travel expense for the training that she's going to be attending. And then we get to the electricity for the courthouse repair, which was 12,000. Uh, repairs and maintenance, $34,000. Lawn maintenance, $2,260. Um, the extension office, electricity, $1625. Five-star volunteer and Nortex needed increases to their volunteers. They actually, um, uh, had more volunteers come than the $5,000 we had budgeted. So it's 500 additional dollars for Five-Star and 1,200 for Nortex. In the sheriff's office, we had a $2,000 increase to jail supplies, $22,000 increase to electricity, $1,800 increase to, uh, gas, and then an $8,400 increase to telecom for inmates. That, that item is a large number, but it will be offset with the revenue that we get from that big case a month later.
We get a revenue, right.
Yes, sir. Um, juvenile probation, the liability insurance went up $125. Waystation had some additional repairs of $675. Environment, environmental, uh, $47 for meals and $110 for cell phone.
Barbara, before, before you go, I'm not going to interrupt you, but on the waystation, does that have the, that air conditioner included in those that we had to get out there? Is that a different one?
That's a different one.
Different expense, okay.
And I, I don't think we have a purchase order on that one. Do we have a purchase order on that one?
On which one?
On the waystation, the air conditioning?
That was way back.
Oh, it was way back?
First of the year.
Well, usually we put those somewhere else. We do not put them with that.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Okay, human services, utilities at the meal center, $1,425. County agents, FICA changes, and then $1,000 for utilities brings us to $101,163 from our contingency fund, which leaves the contingency at $1,283,328. All of the rest of these are items that are special revenue. These funds can only be used for these specific items because they're designated that way. The first one is the local and tribal council grant funds, the additional $50,000 that we just received. We do have that money now. We've received it. It's something that next year, obviously next year, it's October 1st is here, we'll need to make a decision as to how we want to spend those funds. They can be spent like ARPA funds. We have $100,000 sitting there that we've not yet made a plan for. We can use those at the, at the commissioner's court discretion. Uh, precinct one road and bridge, uh, you know, we had, we, we separated the overtime that was paid as a result of the storm, but we've not been notified of any grant opportunities, so we're going to have to cover that. So it's $718 for our precinct one overtime disaster salaries, $300 for electricity, and then we reduced the road, the other road materials by $1,018. In precinct two, the overtime disaster salaries were $150 and then increased to miscellaneous of $4,425. Uh, in precinct three, the overtime disaster salaries were $8,875. Electricity was 250 and a reduction to road oil of $9,125.
Part of that, part of that is being that Argo was the one that got hit hardest with the storm, so that's going to be-
Yes.
-why that figures so much difference.
I think, I think y'all got two storms, didn't you? Didn't you get two storms?
Sugar Hill and Argo, yes.
Yes, yes. And precinct four, the overtime disaster salaries were 2,569, supplies 580, and a reduction of road materials of $3,149. Um, then we get, this, this next one seems like, you know, it's a $5 budget amendment, but because it's a grant, we have to do that. So the HAVA grant, it's Help Americans Vote Act for the elections office, had a remaining balance of $5,000. That grant has been closed out so that that money will be transferred just to general county. County clerk archives, we have an increase of $11,800. Uh, there's about $240,000 in that fund that can only be used for archiving. These are old things from prior years that did not get built for some reason. So we've gone back. Thank you, Leslie. She's done the research and checked on those and it, it is something that the county owes, so we'll, we need a budget amendment for that. The sheriff forfeiture fund, now the sheriff can spend these and he's personally responsible for the management of these funds, but when I came to work, we started budgeting those because I, it's important that the public and U.S. commissioners are aware of how those funds are spent. This is just an other expense item. It's, um, it's some uniforms for, um, you know, the officers there, $8,300. The commissary fund, $1,900 increase to the laundry line item and also an increase of the transfer in from the canteen. The way it works, it's a little confusing, but the canteen sells the items to the inmates and the public can come in and put funds on their loved ones or, you know, whoever they want to's accounts. And then if a profit is made and the profit is, we usually make a profit, since I've been here, we've always made a profit and for many years before that, then those funds are transferred to the commissary fund to be used for the benefit of the inmates. So it's a little confusing, but it's the way it's required to be set up. We also have a $1 budget amendment for debt service. You know, we talked about debt service is not a grant, but it's taxes and the interest expense that we pay on one of those bonds, most of them are whole numbers, but one of them is, is a, a large amount and 25 cents. I've been budgeting the whole numbers. We need to budget for the actual amount, so I, I don't want to start budgeting for 25 cents. We'll just budget a dollar so that it's even. So it's $1 in to interest expense and a $1 reduction in the paying agents fees. That's what we pay, uh, the banks that manage, make those payments to the bondholders. Um, on the 2004 Right-Away Capital Project, that's the FM 1735, we need an increase of $100 to legal fees and a reduction from miscellaneous costs of $100. The canteen store, because the commissary increased and the canteen has to, we have to increase what they're going to pay out by the same amount, $97,425. And then the maintenance barn, uh, we have changes to hospital insurance, all the benefits, uniforms, cell phone, uh, and $150 for other expense and building maintenance. The employee benefit items are related to James Webster being, uh, part of that now and that is funded through the use of the maintenance barn fund balance. The reason I sent this to you earlier is because it's a lot.
It's long.
But it's our end of year and, um, as far as I'm aware, we're, we're ready to go for our audit and we should have another successful audit year.
All right, we'll accept the motion.
Thank you.
Motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve those budget amendments?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 12, sign the pay orders and approve the payments?
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Jimmy makes a motion to pay the, uh, orders and approve payments?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Number 13, closing statements. Jeff?
None down here.
Jody? Closing statement.
The, uh, the, uh, out here at the, uh, oh, out here, the part of building out here?
Yeah, extension building.
Ag Center. They've asked us to, uh, if we come out this week and put some, uh, fix their driveway, I don't know if we could get together and-
Yeah, we'll help you anyway. You're talking about on the ag row, fly.
Ag, yeah.
And, uh, Jeff had a good deal about, you know, putting that, what do you call it? That stuff on top, that ramp.
That, uh, oh, is that sealer, that primer, the mulsion on top of it?
He said if we get, keep them off a day, it would, uh, it'd make a good driveway.
Y'all figure out what day's good for y'all on a motion?
27th is when he wants it done, but he's got a lot of, the 27th of this month.
Yeah, they want it 27th, 28th.
But the thing about it is we got a lot of prep work to do before then. Are they going to move out of the way? They, all that big pile of mulch?
That's what I told them, I had to move. I told them I had to move them and, uh, they would move it, but we would put that, you know, all we had to have up there, we'd have to sweep it off, we had to have a roller-
Right.
And, uh, excuse me, the blade. And then we'd put that spray on there and then keep them off for one day and it was set up.
Yeah.
I think that'd be the cheapest route out to go on that.
Be a good route.
It'll look good too.
If they, if they don't clean the, uh, whatever we, the, uh, the shaving, they don't get them out, we won't do that part.